Everybody, all my people here. Good evening, let's call this meeting to order, could I have a roll call please?
Mayor Weinberg.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joel.
Here.
Commissioner Bloom.
Here.
Commissioner Friedland.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Marks.
Here.
Commissioner Stern.
Here.
Mr. Watson.
Here.
And Mr. Myers.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. As we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll ask our Police Explorers to get us started very loudly from there. That was outstanding. Thank you all for being here, it's great to see crowd. Whether you're here to be honored, here to tell us we did something right, or here to tell us everything we do wrong, it's great to have people come and participate in the process. Everyone should feel comfortable doing that every month, it's what makes our city great. Okay, any, Mr. Manager, any additions or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I have two items to be pulled off consent, which will be Item C and Item D.
Okay, Item C and Item D will be handled separately. We're gonna, we're already on Item Four, Special Presentations. This is a special, special presentation, and I would ask that all of us stand in front of the dais for a moment.
Whereas colorectal cancer is the second leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States among men and women combined, and...
Whereas screening for colorectal cancer can lead to earlier detection and save lives by allowing for the prevention and treatment of this disease, and...
Whereas colonoscopy screening rates have still not returned to pre-COVID-19 levels with an estimation that one in three people who are eligible for screening are not doing so, and...
Whereas there are patients and survivors within the city of Aventura, including our beloved Commissioner Michael Stern, who are personally impacted by colorectal cancer and have joined together to spread the word about the importance of raising awareness about this screenings, and...
Whereas the city of Aventura would like to recognize Aventura Commissioner Michael Stern as an advocate of Fight Colorectal Cancer and their combined efforts to increase awareness and offer education on the importance of early detection and screening of colorectal cancer.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Howard S. Weinberg, as Mayor, and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Aventura, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Colo-Rectal Cancer Awareness Month. Michael?
Very briefly, I'd like to thank the city of Aventura for incredible support. By the year 2030, out of all the leading cancers, it will take the most lives of people under 50. Colon cancer is preventable and treatable with the colonoscopy. You haven't got a colonoscopy, call and schedule one. It is preventable, and it is gonna be one of the leading cancers in this world if it's not taken care of now. I'm going to Washington next week to ask for more funding, thank you very much for this opportunity, appreciate it.
I think I speak for all of us, Commissioner Stern, when I say you are our hero. Next, on special recognition, I'd like to call on Chief Ben Talila.
Good evening. Tonight is a very proud night for me and other members of the agency. We have a lot of people to thank for a lot of great things going on with the Police Department. I'd like to start off with our explorers, if you haven't already noticed them, they're here in the back. And the front row are wearing Class A uniforms, those of you wearing Class As, please stand up. So as you can see, that's the new uniform for our explorers. In order to be authorized to wear the Class A uniform, you have to be a dedicated explorer for at least six months and also attend and pass the Explorer Academy, which these individuals all have done and represented not only our agency, but the city of Aventura, you know, tremendously well. And our explorers in the back there are also prepping and getting ready to do the same, and eventually you'll be seeing all of them in those Class A uniforms that are so very sharp. I want to thank our instructors, our TA, I think Sonia Harrison's also here. Thank you all for the tremendous job you've done and the vision that you've had. Teresa, never stop fighting, and I hope you're enjoying tonight as just as much as I am. So, thank you to all of you and explorers, thank you for your dedication, your hard work, and everything you're giving back to your community, thank you. We're also going to be officially unveiling a specialty vehicle that we put a lot of time and effort in. It took a lot of convincing to get the City Manager to go along with me on this, but I want to thank him for allowing me to do so and to see the vision here. And it did get a lot of momentum, and a lot of people pitched in to make this happen. Those individuals are here tonight, but first, we're gonna do a quick little video that's gonna be going out on social media, and then we'll be recognizing those who helped us make this happen.
Hello, I'm Chief Michael Ben Talila with the Aventura Police Department, and today I'm very happy to unveil our brand-new slingshot vehicle. Through a collaborative effort with Ben Lornitz from Tin House Customs, Al Askenazi from the CPR Foundation, and our friends at Strobes R Us, we were able to put together this community policing and outreach vehicle in order to establish ties with the community, establish ties with our local schools, reach out with other groups throughout South Florida, and also in our recruitment efforts. The Aventura Police Department is trying to do whatever we can to make all of these relationships stronger, and this is just one way of us being able to open up those lines of communications and make those bonds. So we're very happy to be able to unveil this beautiful vehicle today, and hopefully you'll get to see it around our city very soon. I'm Ben Lornitz, and my wife and I, Jess over here, we own Tin House Customs here in Davie, Florida. We are a company that basically does car protection services, everything from vinyl wraps, we do window tanning, paint protection film, ceramic coating, everything to make the car beautiful and keep it a long time. We were very excited when Chief Ben Talila asked us if we could participate in this project, and we were donated already the wrap for the Breast Cancer Awareness of Police Explorer, and then with the slingshot, we thought that was a very exciting opportunity, so we were very glad to be a part of that. We're huge about back in the blue, so just love giving back.
Hello, I'm Jeffrey Andy, Executive Director of the Strobes R Us. We've been in this industry for 24 years, Strobes R Us was founded in 1999, and we are very proud to be part of this project on the Polaris Slingshot, saving Aventura. A lot of us at this facility and our other facility in Jupiter are retired law enforcement and veterans, and we're very happy to keep the officers at Aventura safe and well, they're on the road.
Hello, my name is Star Arista, I'm a Retro Law Firm Sales for a company, I've been with the company for 21 years. We're excited to be part of the Strobes R Us project, and plus you are one of the sponsors of the global industry, so we're very excited.
Hello, my name is Al Askenazi, the Community Police Relations Foundation, commonly known as CPR Foundation. I'd like to thank the city of Aventura for allowing the Community Police Relations Foundation to be a sponsor of the slingshot. Chief Michael Ben Talila's vision of using this vehicle as an introduction to community, by law enforcement, the community can come together and have some fun today, whether it be football events, basketball events, or just community events. So we thank you for allowing us to be part of this on behalf of all our membership, have a good day.
So now you're gonna be seeing it around town more often now that we're officially unveiled, and all three of our benefactors are here tonight, if you can come up, that would be great. Also, we got a small little token of recognition for you. Many of you know Orvieto, and when he saw the slingshot and heard what we were doing, he wouldn't even let us play, pay for the flags that we got from him. So everybody gets on board, everybody's really excited about it. And I also need to thank Captain Chalem and Officer Brizuela for putting in so much time and effort and making that video and doing it in the deadline that I gave it to them. They really made it happen, and putting something like that together is not easy, so, gentlemen, come around this side. All right, if you didn't see it, it is parked out front, it'll be out here all night, and later on, please, it's there for you to stand in front of, take pictures, wanna sit inside, take a picture, that's what it's there for, and you'll be seeing it popping up at all of our city events. It'll randomly pop up at our schools, so the kids will be able to see them when they walk in, and we're gonna be attending a lot of other events outside of the city to show everybody in the South Florida community that Aventura is present, and we're here, and we want to be a part of everybody else's community as well, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I just want to point out to those of you that are not usually in attendance, you could see, I think, and I hope, how great our city is, how we work to keep making the city of excellence more excellent. And there's no better example than our Police Explorer program that started fairly recently, and these young people have worked so hard and trained so hard, and I would be remiss if I didn't ask Officer Williams to please acknowledge yourself. This is, this is, you deserve this credit for our Police Explorers, please let everyone know. You here? So, that's just one thing, we keep looking for new ideas, we keep trying to get better and better, but congratulations to the explorers. We have some certificates of appointment now, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, everybody, I'd like to, tonight we're appointing three members to our Community Services Advisory Board. These are members of the community who've come forward and will serve as volunteers and help our city in its community service and our Parks and Recreation Department to help it make it better and give advice to our staff. I'd like to invite Donna Mares. Jesse Potack. Bruce Davison, I don't know if he's here, I don't think he is, I think he's in Italy, so we're gonna give him a pass tonight. The following two people I'd like to call is our, to our Donsofer High School Advisory Board. These are also volunteers that give their time and help our school maintain its excellence at the high school. First, I don't, I didn't see if he's here, is Clifford, Cliffane here? Okay, and our other volunteer is Nadine Welpin-Lahin.
Congratulations to all the new board members, thank you in advance for your service. I think the rules were probably explained to you, if you miss a meeting, we dock half of your annual salary, so keep that in mind. Mr. Manager?
Tonight we have two employee service awards, so I'd like to invite Officer Barbara Roche up to the... Barbara originally came to us from Golden Beach, it's hard to believe she left Golden Beach for Aventura and never went back, which is usually what happens here in Aventura. He's a 20-year veteran, which in policing, that is a real career. You wouldn't know it, but she was part of our hostage negotiators. But I think what I've seen and what I've come to learn is her real passion, I think, is helping the seniors, and she gets very heavily involved with community, community policing, and helping people who fall between the cracks. And that's where she's really made it an effective part of her career, and is really a great part of our department. Our second, thank you Barbara, our second service award, I'd like to invite Gladys Carmel. Gladys, Gladys is with Aventura for 10 years and is our Human Services Director. I have to tell you, I've been working with Gladys for five years now. There is not a nicer person that you would ever find, and the right kind of person to handle human services. When people have issues, the door is always open, and I don't think, I've ever seen her upset. She just digs in and really goes the extra effort to help our employees, whether we're recruiting, whether we're trying to hire somebody, somebody needs help, she's right there all the time, and it's really a pleasure and an honor, it takes a special person to do that job, and we're very lucky to have her here.
Okay, moving on. We're gonna have an update from our schools. First will be Aces, Doctor?
All right, good evening, Commission. So first to start off, we're done with our 2023-24 lottery. Right now, we actually started this week registering our new kindergarten students for next year, and in May, we will start testing them academically with the goal of figuring out what's the best course placement for those kindergarten students and figuring out who would benefit from summer enrichment prior to even starting kindergarten. Again, a thing that most schools aren't able to provide, but we're able to do because we have so much support from you in the city. In addition, we're continuing our parent focus on making sure we're building strong connections with our families. We started a new thing called Rita Palooza, where all kindergarten and second grade families are being invited on campus over a three-week stretch to sit with their children, read with their children, but more importantly, to hear the strategies we use at school that they can replicate at home. And then they also get to hear from Mindful Monkeys, who works with our students on an ongoing basis about how mindfulness can play a role in behavior management and academics. In addition, we continue to partner with FIU and TAL Therapeutic Services to provide parent workshops to all ages. Some recent ones were Adolescent Development and How to Manage Behaviors of Younger Children at Home. And so we will monthly provide those services to our parents to come in on campus, build that connection, and then learn skills that'll be useful for them at home. We're fully in field trip season right now, we recently had sixth grade go on an overnight trip to Bone Valley, fourth grade visited the Everglades, third grade went to Surfside, and next week, our seventh graders will take our longer trip to Washington DC. Many other trips will continue later in the year, but these will be our last group before testing season, and then after testing, we'll pick back up. We're proud of our middle school robotics team, who recently received their first invite to compete in the South Florida State Robotics Championships. This is a program we're growing little by little with a partnership with local business Code Ninjas, who supports us in making sure our students have the best technology to practice with. And our boys' basketball teams, both JV and Varsity made it to the championships. JV won, Varsity came in second place. For our male sports teams, we won in football, we won in soccer, and we came in second place in basketball. So our sports teams really came back from COVID and worked hard to make sure we're dominating in that field. And then lastly, a seventh-grade student, James Reese... And then lastly, a seventh-grade student, James Reese, for the second time in two years will compete in the Regional Spelling Bee for a chance to represent ACES at the National Spelling Bee in Washington DC with Scripps. Last year, he came in fifth place. So we're very hopeful that he can come in third place or higher to represent us. And we'll see him on ESPN, hopefully spelling words for all of us. That's the ACES update, unless there's any questions for me.
Commissioner Marks?
Dr. Chakala, thank you for a great report, first of all. In terms of the kids who are going to Washington DC, have we allowed or made provisions for the kids who may have a little bit of difficulty financially?
For, for anything that requires money, we encourage our families to reach out to us and we ask our counseling team and teachers who may benefit. Whenever they do, we work with them as well as well we can.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Donsofer High School, Doctor?
Good evening. I'm losing my voice a little bit. We're doing course presentations for next year's process of establishing the master board, so exciting time. We're very proud of our students. The best bit of news we recently received were the acceptances from University of Florida. As many of you know, University of Florida is now a top-five public university, it's number four, actually, in the United States. And it's as challenging to get into as some of the Ivies. So it's become extremely competitive. We hit 30, the 30 mark, students accepted to U of this year, so we're really excited about that. We had additional students accepted to FSU, which is top 20 in the nation. Now we're up to 34 there. So that's exciting. It's a culmination of a lot of amazing work and just great ability for our students. We're looking forward to strengthening our student population. I'm glad to hear we've got spellers, robotics engineers, scholars, and athletes coming from ACES. Most importantly, there are students who love school, they have a great work ethic, great bond with their principal, and we're excited to have them among our 300 Aventura residents who applied so, actually on time. We have now about another 12, 14 who have applied to the freshman class alone. So overall, we're pushing 700 applicants for roughly 200 to matriculate. And we're excited about bringing them on board. Speaking of bringing on board, actually, before I get to that, I want to say this is something that just is, is ruminating throughout our school. It's a tremendous amount of appreciation for the work that you all did and having the referendum money given to our teachers. I know it's the same for ACES, but they're so appreciative. Our teachers are now the highest-paid public, or the starting salary, the highest-paid public educators in the state of Florida, as they deserve. It's a beautiful statement as far as how much you appreciate them, so thank you for that. We participated last weekend in Model UN, which is really where we belong. We have over 50 birth countries represented by our 800 students. And at Model UN, there were 35 schools from Miami-Dade County who qualified for this event. Some of those schools have more students in a single grade than we have in our entire school. We run first place going away. We had 14 students who are best in their categories. Some of the categories had more than 80 students in each category, so it was phenomenal. They want to do a presentation for you, so that'll be at the next meeting. Tonight, introductions. First of all, I just want to say, have you say hello? This is our new drama director, who's still there, Ms. Vera. She's doing a phenomenal job. She also teaches just about everything, but for us right now, college-level sociology class. And now we have some students who are going to give you a preview of a great show. It'll be April 11th and 12th at the Aventura Community Center. Hopefully, you all will be able to go. It's Wednesday and Thursday night, which is kind of an odd time, but we were competing with Taylor Swift. We didn't want to take too many of her concert goers away, so we gave her a break this time and chose the Wednesday and Thursday presentations. So we have Regina and Elon and Eli, who are going to perform. Nicholas is sound technician. And you guys ready? Back and roll, let's go. And this is for, again, the show's Chicago Aventura Cultural Center. Tickets are on sale through Ticketmaster available now. Evan is going to film it, I hope. Should be an amazing show. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was so wonderful. Do we live in a great city or what? I urge, I urge you all to download the text notification service that we have. You can find it on the cityofaventura.com website. And you'll get notified when there's a show like this at our Performing Arts Center, when there's road closures. You can choose which category you want to keep in the loop about. You want to know what's going to be happening at the commission meetings, et cetera, et cetera. We're working very hard to communicate as much as possible to get the word out as much as possible about the wonderful things that are happening in our city. Speaking of which, I would definitely be remiss if I didn't. Oh, sure, go ahead.
I just want to add something to the students at Donsofer. We are very thrilled that you picked the show Chicago to do. Many of us here at the commission are part of the SASE Six, and we will definitely be there to see you. We are very fond of the show, so good luck.
I digress for one second. You heard the principal mention something. Just for those of you that are not aware, the bond several years ago for public education that most of us in this city supported, we voted yes. After the fact, the Dade County Public Schools decided that our teachers were not eligible for those payments. All Dade County Public School teachers got extra pay, but our teachers didn't. And that didn't sit well with the prior commission. And those of us that were on that commission, Commissioner Marks, myself, Commissioner Freeland, I believe, we filed a lawsuit against Dade County Public Schools. That's not an easy thing to do because our, you know, our prior mayor, Enid Weissman, is very courageous because she was with Dade County Public Schools for 34 years. But we knew it was the right thing for our teachers. And we lost, and we appealed, and we won. And last week, we put the teachers on notice that those checks are coming and they're getting the money they deserve. So, having said that, I want to point out that had you had the tech service, you would have known that last week, what day was that? Sun, Sunday? Friday? We rode our bikes from Holloway to Founder's Park as part of Bike 305, Bike to Work Day. And the reason why we did it, and our police were tremendous participants, we rode with the county mayor. And the reason is because we were named, Aventura was named Bike 305 Municipality of the Year. We are the winners. The reason for that, biggest reason, is our Director of Community Services, Kimberly Merchant. So if you could just be recognized, please. Raise your hand. Okay. Moving on. Boy, this is fun. Is the representative, is Brian Kronberg here from, great, from Brightline? I asked for a Brightline representative to come and update us. We get a lot of questions, and of course, we all want to know. I'm sure the commissioner will have questions. I have three. Thank you, by the way, for coming here. The three questions I get most often, when will that landscaping go back up so we don't look at self-storage? When will the pedestrian bridge be completed so that you can walk from Aventura Mall to the train? And when will the Orlando stop be opening? That's probably a good starting point, but anyway, thank you.
All right, well, it's good to be here. Thank you for having me. Ron reached out. I've been working closely with Ron over the last few years on, on the Aventura station and glad to be here tonight and do my best to answer those three questions that you have and any other questions that commission has. As it relates to your first question about the landscaping, we're currently working with FDOT. That'll be on FDOT property between the curb and the FEC right-of-way, because there are, there are, there is no more room in the FEC right-of-way for landscaping. So what we're working on with FDOT is to install a fence and on the fence add green vines that will grow and prevent people from illegally trespassing, heading east or heading west. As it relates to the pedestrian bridge, now that Aventura Station is open, we're now focused on building the bridge. And the way I'd categorize that is there's three components. There's the aerial rights over Biscayne Boulevard, there's the landing on Turnberry property, and there's the actual bridge structure itself. As it relates to FDOT and the aerial rights, we've had a few meetings with FDOT. We're currently waiting for FDOT to deliver us the aerial rights agreement that would give us the rights to fly over Biscayne Boulevard. That should, we should get that in a few weeks, and we'll work with FDOT to execute that. As it relates to the landing spot on the east side, we've been working for the better part of a year with Turnberry to figure out where and how this is going to land on the outparcels of Aventura Mall. So they've been a great partner with us. And right now, we've conceptually agreed on the location, and we're just figuring out the most efficient way to get passengers down and into the mall safely with, with them. And then the last of which is the actual bridge structure itself. We just finished the design of that. And because it's such an important structure and we're going over Biscayne Boulevard, there's a lot of sensitivities and reviews that need to happen to make sure that, that that is designed and constructed safely. So it's currently under a peer review, which means an independent engineer that's different from the engineer that designed it is reviewing it. Once that is approved by the peer reviewer, that'll go into FDOT for an additional review. As it relates to the, the question of when will it be open, it's somewhat dependent on the, the review cycles that we go through with the peer reviewer and FDOT. But likely, we're talking first or second quarter of next year before the bridge is, constructed and operational. Oh, and Orlando. So Orlando, we are significantly advanced as it relates to the construction. We just received the temporary certificate of occupancy for the station in Orlando. And we just started our testing for 130 mile an hour train testing on the east-west corridor between Cocoa and Orlando. I can't give you an exact day when, when Revenue Service will start it. That, too, is dependent on FRA and a number of testing that we need to go through and get approved, but it is, will be later this year.
Thank you so much. So not till first or second quarter for the bridge?
Most likely.
Okay. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Stern?
Will the city of Aventura have any input into what may be displayed on the outside? Not necessarily the physical structure, but more of the beautification of the bridge?
There is an agreement that Aventura entered into via funds contributed by Turnberry and Saritage that will be used, that those funds will come to help contribute to the overall cost. And in that agreement, there are some conditions that, that we come before Aventura City Council to show you the, the bridge before it's constructed and seek input.
Any chance that will be done before next year?
No. The, the, the design process, yes, we're doing that now. But it's not something that, that anyone wants to rush and needs to be done. And, and the amount of people that are going to be looking at it is, is appropriate for, for the level of structure that we're building. But the design and, and renderings and what, what you'll see when you drive on, that is absolutely a this-year item.
So I know this may not be your specific area, but I understand that Brightline has some monthly passes that they sell that people use to use the services for their employment between Miami and Fort Lauderdale. And I've had a few residents ask about it, but we don't have a lot of information. So if it's not you, if you can ask someone at Brightline to get in touch with our communications department so we can share more of that information, because I think it's, that's something that needs to get the word out about.
Yep. I, I certainly, it is not me, but I will get it to the right people. And we did just update as of Monday, a new train schedule for Aventura. So if you logged on, there are, I'll say, better train times between Miami and Aventura as compared to last week.
Good. And I just know, like, the passes that people can use for, you know, to use it for work and stuff is, you know, very beneficial, and I want to be able to share that information with our residents.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll follow up with Ron.
Any other questions? Commissioner Cruz?
Just a quick question. I had heard, and maybe I misheard, that maybe you'd be providing a car service, sort of like our freebie, for people who aren't going to the Aventura Mall, but maybe going somewhere else in Aventura to make it easier for them to get to wherever they're going?
Right now, we have the shuttle that's taking people. We have a few shuttles every hour taking people from the train to Aventura Mall, but that is the only service. You, you are able to book your Uber with your train ticket, but we don't have the freebie service.
Anyone else? I see none. Thank you.
Yep.
Cards to Jose.
I sure will.
Thank you for coming this evening. By the way, I want to also mention, because it just keeps getting better, the Bike 305 Award as Municipality of the Year. We swept the awards this year because our very own Officer Manny, our ACES School Resource Officer, was Bike 305 Officer of the Year. Manny, can you acknowledge yourself, please? Manny, can you acknowledge yourself, please? Regarding the service that will, the text that will alert you to things that you're interested in, I've been told that if you text the word Aventura, I'm not going to spell it for you. If you text Aventura to the following number, you'll, they will sign you up. The phone number is 305-677-8878. And then they'll give you the options of which categories you're interested in receiving text messages from. Text the word Aventura. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. We pulled C and D. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the remaining items, not including C and D. Commissioner Friedland? And a second, please? Commissioner Cruz? I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bloom?
Yes.
Commissioner Friedland?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joel?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Let's move on to the items that were pulled. First is 5C. If Madam Clerk will read that item.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Aventura, Florida, approving the appointment of three members to the City of Aventura Community Services Advisory Board due to vacancies on said board for the remainder of the one-year terms ending in May 2023 and providing for an effective date.
Okay. A motion to approve, please? Commissioner Friedland? A motion, a second. Commissioner Bloom? Mr. Manager, can you review that item?
Thank you, Mayor. As we talked about earlier, these are volunteers from the community who want to serve on our advisory board for community services. They come to quarterly meetings at City Hall, but actually do a lot of volunteer work with the city. And they're instrumental in helping us put on great shows and really good performances.
Thank you. Comment? Mr. Marks?
Yes. The reason I had asked for both C and D to be polled is because this is very special. These are volunteers who are offering to help our city. And I thought that rather than putting it in a consent agenda where you can't see what the item is, that we would, you know, give it the honor that it deserves and list those, you know, just bring those people's attention.
And these are the folks that received the certificates earlier? Okay. Any other comments? Any member of the public want to comment on this particular item? Okay. Then let's close that for public comment. And let's take a vote.
Commissioner Friedland?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joel?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Let's move on to 5D. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Aventura, Florida, approving the appointment of two voting members to the Don Soper Aventura High School Advisory Board due to vacancies on said board for the remainder of the two-year terms ending in November 2023 and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Manager?
Similar to the advisory board, Don Soper High School has a advisory board. And these are volunteers also who were selected to help the school review policies and help them achieve good things. As we've heard here tonight, there are things that we speak about. And the Assistant Principal and our governing board also to do, to do good things and keep us advised.
Okay. And they're also volunteers. Any comments from the commission? Any comments on this issue from the public? Let's close the matter and let's vote.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloom?
Yes.
Commissioner Friedland?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joel?
Yes.
Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. We're, I believe, we're up to item six. Quasi-judicial public hearings. There are none. Ordinances for first reading, there are none. So item eight, we have ordinances on second reading. Madam Clerk, if you could read on 8A, the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Aventura, Florida, amending Chapter 1, General Provisions of the City of Aventura Code of Ordinances to create Section 1-20, Adoption of IHRA Definition, Consideration of Anti-Semitism and Hate Crimes and Enforcing Laws, to further demonstrate the city's commitment to combat anti-Semitism and directing the police department to consider acts of anti-Semitism and the evaluation of evidence in enforcing hate crime laws, providing for severalability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have Commissioner Cruz? A motion approved. Commissioner Cruz? This is your item. So it's your motion and a second from Commissioner Friedland. And Manager, or would you defer to Commissioner Cruz? Yes. Commissioner Cruz?
I think this is a very important ordinance that we're passing. And we're passing it precisely as an ordinance instead of a resolution because it carries more weight and is more enforceable. The IRA definition, which is the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance Working Definition of Anti-Semitism, includes a core description of anti-Semitism as a certain perception of Jews which may be expressed as hatred towards Jews. Importantly, the definition also includes contemporary examples of anti-Semitism, including when anti-Israel sentiments are masking anti-Semitism. It is a distinction without a difference. Coincidentally, today Jews around the world are celebrating the joyous holiday of Purim, where over 2,000 years ago, a despicable, malevolent Haman conspired to kill all the Jews of Persia. But his plot was uncovered by Queen Esther when listed to help of Mordecai to foil the dastardly plan and kill, and kill, and killed Haman and his ten sons instead. Sound familiar? Today, in modern Persia, Iran, the Yatollahs and Molas have been openly threatening to annihilate Israel and all the Jews around the world for several decades. It is a reminder that Jew hatred is the oldest, most enduring and pernicious bigotry in the history of the world, which has taken multiple forms over the generations and is now often expressed by demonizing and delegitimizing the only Jewish state in the world, Israel. This is a vivid reminder that history keeps repeating itself because, regrettably, mankind doesn't learn from it. And if there's one thing the world should have learned from the tragic ways, the tragic ways so many empires, nations, and cultures have viciously and inexcusably attacked the Jews, it is that what starts with the Jews never ends with the Jews. In spite of this, and only constituting less than 0.1% of the population, the Jewish people in the state of Israel have always contributed mightily to the advancement of mankind. In World War II, a righteous German intellectual pastor named Martin Niemel, or famously, an often quoted poem says, "First, they came for the communists, and I did not speak out because I was not a communist. Then they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist." Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me. Deborah Lipstadt, the world-renowned professor, currently serving as a White House envoy to monitor and combat anti-Semitism, has said that this metastasizing global scourge is a three-legged stool. It emanates from the far-right, the intersectional-left, and Muslim extremists. I would add a leg and make it a chair as unfortunately, now it is taking root with hateful groups like the Black Hebrew Israelites and Minister Louis Farrakhan's hateful Nation of Islam. It must not be tolerated or given any quarter, but rather must be confronted loudly and courageously. Unfortunately, we haven't been immune in Florida. Recently, the despicable group called the Goiim Defense League moved here from California. And a couple of weeks ago, we saw them in action, in action harassing a Habad in Orlando, after which they joined other bigoted groups to promote a National Day of Hate. They have also distributed virulent anti-Semitic flyers throughout yards and homes throughout South Florida. This must stop. We have worked with the Zionist Organization of America to enact this IRA Working Definition of Anti-Semitism, which is, which our commission is proudly passing unanimously tonight as an ordinance. It is an acknowledgement of this threatening reality and a powerful tool to understand how anti-Semitism is expressed today so that we can fight this ugly bigotry more effectively. This is not a partisan political issue of Republicans versus Democrats, liberals versus conservatives, or right versus left, but simply right versus wrong. We are fortunate to live in a wonderful city that is caring, inclusive, and tolerant, one that is willing to fight for what is right and to ensure that all of our residents and visitors feel safe and welcome. Our community should be proud that a couple of months ago, Mayor Weinberg went to Athens, Greece with a large and strong group of mayors from around the globe to represent us in an international mayor's conference to combat anti-Semitism. I want to thank Mayor Weinberg, all of my fellow commissioners and city leaders and Police Chief Bentolila for demonstrating once again why we continue to be the city of excellence. It is our hope that many more municipalities, counties, states, and countries will follow suit. We must all be part of the solution. Our children's and country's future and prosperity depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Yes. You mentioned that. It was one week after I was sworn in as mayor, I was in Athens, Greece for the International Mayor's Conference to Combat Anti-Semitism with about 45 mayors from around the world. And one of the action items was to bring home the idea of passing the IRA Definition of Anti-Semitism. That item is not something I needed to bring home because Commissioner Cruz was already at work on it. So with four votes tonight, it will become the law in Aventura. Any other commission comments? Any public comment on this issue? Seeing none? I'll, yes, ma'am. Please, you have to come up here and state your name. It's on this issue, please. Name and address.
Marcel Fischler, 3370 Northeast 190th Street. I commend you for your work on this. I think it's fantastic. Aventura does have a very large percentage of Jewish people. And I'm wondering, in light of all the increase in anti-Semitism, if the city is doing anything to buff up the security for everyone?
We are. It's not something I think we should talk about, but the chief is right there. And you can have a conversation with him anytime. He's also available to speak to any groups, under minimum associations, temples. He's so good at that. On the so-called International Day of Hate, which in our city was the Shabbos of Love, I was speaking at Young Israel. And I saw the chief walk by because he made it a point personally to visit every temple in our city. And I called him in, and he spoke to the congregation with me. So talk to him privately. It's much better conversation to be had of the record. But thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? And I just want to make it clear for the record, my trip to the International Mayor's Conference to Combat Anti-Semitism costs the Aventura taxpayers a total of $0. And that was the only way that I would do it. Okay. Then we'll close it, and we will vote and see if we can get four votes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloom?
Yes.
Commissioner Friedland?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joel?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, everyone. Okay. We have another second reading. That would be 8B. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the City of Aventura, Florida, amending Section 31-144, Business Zoning Districts of the city's Land Development Regulations to include restaurant, café, or coffee house with a drive-through as a conditional use in the community business B2 district, providing for severalability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve? Vice Mayor Joel? And a second, Commissioner Cruz? Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Like the ordinance that was just read, this is a change to our, to our code that would allow in the business section an application to come before the commission. And if they would allow it, to allow a drive-through, through, a drive-through restaurant to be approved, it would only be with the commission approval. And it's right now, it's not allowed. But in the future, if it's, if it's a good, good project, it would get approved.
Okay. Any, Dr. Marks, comment? No? Okay. I saw you up on the board. Any commission comment? Any public comment on this issue? Having none, we'll close that and let's vote.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloom?
Yes.
Commissioner Friedland?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joel?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we're up to H C. Madam Clerk?
In ordinance of the City of Aventura, Florida, amending section thirty-one dash two thirty-three, Architectural Design Standards of the City of Aventura Code of Ordinances to adopt a primary color palette applicable to the exterior surfaces of any multifamily townhouse or non-residential building, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date.
I need a motion. Commissioner Friedland?
Yes.
Nope. It's your motion because this is your item. And a second, Commissioner Stern. Okay. Mr. Manager, can you review this?
Sure. This is, the city has decided to have a color palette. So when new projects come in or buildings are going to be updated, that they would have a chart to work from. If there is an exception or if a different color is chosen, that person could come in front of the commission and ask for a special approval.
Okay, any commission comment? Any public comment on this issue? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Marks? Questions?
At the last meeting, there was some discussion about whether prior projects that are already up were grandfathered in or not, and I don't think that was answered in full. So could you clarify that for us?
Just say the question again. So is the project underway?
Projects that are already up that do not meet the color palette, whether it's residential or commercial, are they grandfathered in?
They're grandfathered in, and so at such time as they have to repaint. Then they would have, which is every ten years.
Okay, so essentially after a ten-year period?
And you have to come in.
Everyone should be conforming?
Should be, but if there's a special color and they want to come in and say, I'd like to stay with it, then it will be up to the commission at the time.
Thank you.
No other comment? Any comment from the public? Okay, then let's close and let's vote.
Commissioner Bloom?
Yes.
Commissioner Friedland?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joel?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Let's move on to D. Madam Clerk?
In ordinance of the City of Aventura, Florida, amending Article One of Chapter fourteen, Buildings and Building Regulations of the City of Aventura Code of Ordinances, by creating code section fourteen dash three, Annual Certification of Structural Maintenance, and amending Article Two of Chapter fourteen of the City Code, by creating code section fourteen dash thirty-two, Painting and/or Waterproofing of Exterior Building Surfaces Required, Providing for Penalty, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Can I have a motion to approve Vice Mayor Joel? And could I have a second, Commissioner Stern? Mr. Manager?
Thank you. As a result of this Champlain Towers collapse, a lot of the building codes have been reviewed. And two suggestions which came out of it was to look at structural issues within buildings and to come up with a regular inspection schedule. Aventura has really taken the lead on many of those things, and these are two suggested changes that are going to be made. One is painting requirements, that you're required to paint your building every ten years. That's to prevent waterproof, for waterproofing and to make sure water doesn't get in and destroy your, the steel in the walls. And the second thing, which is important, is to come up with, we will have an annual structural report that will be done by each building and then submitted to our building department for review. If there's any abnormalities, we will give you a visit and just to make sure that everything is being kept up to standards.
Okay, any comment by the commission? Any comment by the public? Any public comment? I seeing none, close it and vote.
Commissioner Friedland?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joel?
Yes.
And Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item nine resolutions, there are none this evening. Reports. Any members of the commission have any items to report? How about the manager, clerk, or attorney, any items? Okay. Let's move to item eleven. Public comment? Mr. Attorney, can you review the purpose of this item?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So this is an opportunity for the public to have three minutes to address the commission on matters that are within the city's jurisdiction that haven't already been dealt with in the other agenda items. It's not a time for back and forth between members of the commission and the public. I understand that there are a number of people here for one specific issue. Mayor, if I can point out, state law allows you as the chair, if people are going to make the same statements over and over again, you can cut that off. That's your call. The other thing is if someone speaks for less than three minutes and they want to yield their time to somebody else, I mean, my opinion is you don't have to allow that. Speakers can speak a maximum of three minutes even if somebody is willing to yield time to another speaker. And those are the policies.
Thank you. So to ask each person, when they come up, state your name and your address. A couple of things to keep in mind. One, as you heard, if you're saying the same thing that was already heard, better to defer. If you have something new to add, then of course it's welcome. Also, we maintain decorum, so no booing, no clapping, just be respectful. That's the way we do things here. Everyone gets their opportunity to speak, and we don't disrespect anyone. So having said that, whoever would like to start things off, please step up. Ma'am?
Marcel Fischler, thirty-three seventy Northeast one ninetieth Street. Again, in the last several weeks, we have collected close to four hundred signatures from Aventura residents against the pickleball courts. Nearly all of the signers had no idea that their neighborhood Pocket Park, Founders Park South, was about to be paved over as a pickleball and tennis center. Through confessions, I like pickleball. I play pickleball. Aventura should have a public pickleball center. However, Founders Park South is not the appropriate spot. You don't pave paradise for that. You don't destroy a lovely green pocket park that brings serenity and enjoyment to the walkers who stroll by, to those who relax or read on the benches, garden, or gaze at the canal and the bay beyond. This small, calm, green park, so needed in increasingly urbanized and congested Aventura, must also remain for the parents who bring their young children to play. Destroying this beloved green space makes a mockery of Aventura's slogan as a city of excellence, or as a green city. Although the plans call for the community garden to remain, the combination of noisy pickleball and the quiet pastime of gardening is definitely not a fit. According to a Wall Street Journal article from last June, pickleball is creating a problem that is, quote, "driving some communities to distraction," unquote. Although the sport is fast-growing and especially hot with over fifty-five, when the plastic perforated pickleballs are hit, they make a loud, cacophonous, thwacking sound. In a video sent to some residents a few days ago, in an act that I thought was not befitting the office of mayor, Mr. Weinberg pointed out the sounds of children playing during recess across the canal. He disparaged those of us who prefer Founders Park South as a nice place to sit or even meditate. "It's loud," he said as the volume increased. "Mr. Weinberg, the sweet sound of children at play brings a smile to my face. It is one of life's greatest blessings." But in this park, the high-pitched noise of plastic pickleballs that sound like plucking one's tongue through a bullhorn would likely be intolerable to gardeners tending to their plants literally just a few feet away. Not only would the gardeners be affected, but those who live in the adjacent Camden Apartments and an Aventura Marina whose balconies and windows face the park. Even those living on high floors or possibly echo Aventura would be annoyed as the sound bounces. The pop-pop-pop might even be audible in the school classrooms across the canal, not quite the sweet sounds of recess. In fact, around the country, lawsuits by residents note that pickleball noise is a possible public nuisance and violates noise ordinances. Who would want to garden next to that? Who would want to live next to grating pickleball noise? Among the comments on the change.org petition I started, one signer wrote, "We survived the mental stress of pandemic thanks to daily walks with my family in this park. We still enjoy it daily. Hopefully, they will continue to enjoy it long into the future." Twelve seconds left. Traffic is another issue as the exit from the park opens onto an already busy spot on one hundred and ninetieth Street close to the hidden day Aventura Marina gatehouse. Let's not add to the congestion. Let's not lose the green. Let's save the park.
Thank you. Who's next? If you're planning to speak, if you could stand in line so that we can cut down on the delay. Thank you so much.
Herb Astor, thirty-three seventy Northeast one ninety eighth Street, Aventura. I would like to start with the topic of climate resiliency and how we mitigate our resources to face our current and future environmental challenges in Aventura. It is a fact that replacing large swath of water-absorbing soft park ground and garden beds for the hard-water-repealing concrete pickleball courts as proposed at Founders Park South would inevitably cause additional flooding on one hundred and ninety-first Street. Where does water go as it pours off hard concrete but to lower ground at street level? And as our history has shown, additional drainage systems at the taxpayers' expense inevitably back up and cause more of the same problems at the city's expense the city already deals with en masse. That block really floods now because there is a natural water mitigation system built with nature that will completely be wiped out. Would any of you stake your commission on the fact that your new plan will not cause additional flooding on that block? We are already losing the battle against flooding in the city, and we do things that will only make it worse. How many city ordinances will be broken replacing a natural water drainage system with the material that encourages flooding? How much in potential ongoing fines will this project put on us? Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Name Shawn Moss, three-three-three-zero Northeast one ninetieth Street. Let us also talk about the massive effects of noise pollution that the proposed project on one hundred and ninety-first Street will have on the neighborhood. Our mayor carelessly and pompously sent out a recorded video to his neighbors in a failed attempt to demonize children's school laughter at play as noise pollution that could somehow be a nuisance to the community and not as a positive background sound commonly associated and used in meditation, like the sounds of the ocean or rainforest. He failed to critically mention or even think about the effects of noise pollution caused by the new courts will adversely have on our children's mental health while at school. What should we tell the teachers to tell the students when they hear grownups fighting, cursing, and screaming each other over a line call? What should we tell the teachers who have to compete and talk over the new courts, the balls whacking, to get the students' attention and the potential for danger that will cause? We could tell them that the mayor in this city thought that the latest Facebook exercise fad was more important than they were. School is only in session Monday to Friday and is over by three P M. Will the courts also adhere to that schedule? I hope you apologize to the students and faculty for bringing them into a political discussion that nobody else did, and your failed attempt to make them some kind of political pawn for you and your buddies. While we bring in numerous groups like mindful monkeys to teach our kids to find quiet and calm in this world, you take away the spaces for them and their parents to practice it, a clear dismissal of the community's mental health that comes in a time when our children and community's mental health is suffering the most. As someone who suffers from depression and others with disabilities, pocket parks like Founders Park is essential. Don't drag that Aventura down to the tasteless and outdated vision of an overdeveloped suburban town that feels the need to fill every empty space it sees and join other major, modern, sophisticated urban dwellings that celebrate and preserve their open and quiet green spaces, acknowledge the mental health benefits they bring, and protect them for future generations. Who will remember these, please ask yourself, who will remember these actions most at the voting booth when your turn to run? The small, happy community of a niche sport and their invited opponents and instructors from other towns that don't vote here, but do increase traffic and take up parking? Or the rest of this city that won't ever step foot on those courts or even know they were there? Or the broken-hearted and motivated members of the garden community? At no point has this city reached out to the garden community, worked with them, to help them preserve their years of dedication and hard work. Instead, the mayor continues to bully, blindside, and bulldoze this community. And what about the pissed-off and annoyed neighbors that'll have to endure what will inevitably be years of loud construction and traffic from altered lane patterns once completely be left with increased traffic, noise pollution, and flooding? And how about the ever-growing parent population that'll have to take an extra thirty minutes out of their day to get their kids to and from soccer practice or a playdate in Founders Park because of increased traffic, increased flooding, and decreased parking that they are now all too familiar with and are already furious with the city over the current environmental disaster in Founders Park? They are now all too familiar with what construction in the area will bring, and they will not be happy about it. Don't give them more of a reason to be upset with you and think, and if you think they'll forget about, by the next election day, don't worry, this community will remind them. There isn't a member of this board that I don't think, that I, there isn't a member on this board that I didn't vote for. Please don't change my vote. Don't tarnish an otherwise positive tenure that has brought numerous infrastructure improvements and other successful beneficial initiatives, and let us work together to help celebrate this administration and their work to improve our community's environmental impact, mental health, and quality of life. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Good evening. I don't have much voice, I'm sorry. My name is Susan Sussman, two-one-one-five-oh, Northeast Thirty-eighth Avenue. I'd like to find out if we can have a ride along with the police in the new slingshot. That would be one question. I won't read all of this in short, but I know from the mayor, who is gracious enough. Let me put on my glasses for one. I know from the mayor who is gracious enough to answer my concerns about the garden promptly and promptly, answered with great clarity, that all of you want to honor and keep the garden. I know this. That you simply want to move it south to make room for pickleball courts and a tennis court. But what I want to impress on you all tonight is that a garden is a living, breathing thing. You can't pick it up and move it the way you might a slide or a basketball hoop or any other inanimate object. Most of our plants, some of which have been growing for a few years now, will not survive that move. In my desperate attempt to find some thought outside the box, today I drove around to the other parks. And it seemed that Peace Park and Veterans Park could easily accommodate a few pickleball courts, a few here, a few there, putting a few courts closer to more people in an already existent, open space. And I wonder if that option might be something you'd like to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Bonvicini, and I live at three-zero-two-nine Northeast one hundred and eighty-eighth Street. I've been a resident of Aventura for almost a decade now. I was involved with the past effort to protect Founders Park South, the Holly Green Peaceful Park in our busy city, and begged the city to find a better location for the pickleball and tennis courts. And I'm here again for the same reason. I'd like to take a moment to stress that no one who is involved in protecting the park is advocating against pickleball nor tennis. But while sports facilities are important, they already abound in Aventura. There should be at least one park in our city for those residents who seek a different park experience. The sports courts should be built elsewhere. I don't know if you ever sat on one of the park benches at Founders Park South. The birds are chirping, the butterflies are flying, couples are walking, children are playing, and the kids from the charter school on the other side of the canal are in the background. Not a nuisance, but a reminder that life is wonderful. Among the rationales behind changing forever the park, the strangest one goes like this. The kids that play on the other side of the canal disturb the peace of the park. Therefore, the park is not the wonderful, calm oasis so loved by many. Hence, it can be dismantled. Let me say this. I have not met one individual in the last year that was bothered by the kids and their sounds, their laughter, their joy. Well, that special moment in time which you're sitting on the bench in the sun or you're walking along the path by the canal is a moment that will change the quality of your day. It is well researched that nature is a great help in reducing anxiety, stress, and depression. Urban planners and mental health researchers know that green spaces are crucial for mental well-being. But not all parks are created equal. Building pickleball courts and tennis courts in that specific location will change the nature of the park. It will make it noisy. It will make it crowded, chaotic. It will create more traffic in the area, and mostly, it will deprive the residents of the only untouched, peaceful, natural park in the city. There should be one green spot in Aventura where people can gather and just exist in the present time, mindfully, without having to consume, spend, or buy an activity. A project that supports altering forever this one-of-a-kind park to make room for sports courts that could be built somewhere else, especially in a city that calls itself a green city and that is also being recognized as such, is quite radical. I hope that the city would contemplate a more appropriate location for these sports courts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi.
Two-one-three-one-one-five Northeast one eighty-fourth Street, Aventura, Florida, three-three-one-six-zero. I'm here is for the Founders Park South. I'm here to ask our city commission and the city management to reconsider, pave this beautiful paradise into pickleball court. And it's such a beautiful place. I hope someday you could come to enjoy in the morning when the birds are singing, cricket are singing, and just beautiful. You hear the kids playing in the background. You feel life is beautiful. Please, save the park. It is so important for so many people. They have to stay here and work for family reasons. This is a place for them to vacation, to relax. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Dr. Julie Bruno, two-zero-seven-seven-five Northeast Thirty-second Place, Aventura Lakes. I am, I think, uniquely positioned because I play tennis with Cologne and I have a plot at the Founders Park South with my son, who is in Aventura charter, and hope to be in the high school when he turns of age. But, and I am one of those people, unfortunately, that does curse every time I don't get the ball in the line, which Cologne will attest to. So I think that, I feel that the plan is better. It's not a well-placed plan. As the former woman stated, that it's very hard to change those plots and move them. We have so many new species of butterflies this year that we've never had before. We have bees, we have pollinators, we have animals in there that need to survive, for all of us to survive, as well as it teaches critical lessons to our young children who participate in that plot. I feel that possibly, in conceptualizing where these two other or three other tennis courts and pickleball courts go, maybe they should be going where that baseball court goes or is, where nobody plays on it. Maybe once, I think, once a week, there's a baseball team of gentlemen that play on that baseball field. Other than that, nobody's on that field. I live in Aventura Lakes. The field behind me, nobody's on that field. So we have two baseball fields that are not being used except for one hour a week, and you want three courts. I think there's other places that it can be placed rather than in this beautiful garden. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Todd Rubin, two-oh-two-eight-one East Country Club Drive. I read a speech, but everyone said quite enough. I do have one thing. I once grew a, tried growing a garden on my balcony. It failed miserably because there's no sunlight since it's blocked by the other building. So I'm pro-garden, no pickleball. And another thing, thank you for the police support program. I wish I was here twenty-five years ago when I was thirteen.
Thank you.
Well, he practiced for a whole hour. He wanted to say that he wants the garden. And I would also like to share my experience.
I'm sorry, your name and address?
Oh, yes. I'm Jessica Palacios. We recently moved, two weeks ago, to Aventura. So we're exploring parks here, and last Sunday, we- So we're exploring parks here and last Sunday we found, um, the South Founder's Park with this beautiful garden. And if you allow me, I would like to, um, share how we felt, my son and I, in this beautiful place. So my, my son has a special connection with nature, naturally. And seeing how plants grow, where vegetables and fruits come from, being able to do it by himself, uh, it's a privilege, and it's a privilege that we don't only, we don't find very often in parks. So I found this Sunday that this privilege could be possible for him at this park. I felt that this is a sacred place for our souls, for all the living creatures as well. We experienced a lot of butterflies very close to us, very comfortable butterflies, drinking the nectar of the beautiful flowers that very loving and caring people planted here. We saw, we've never seen a cocoon, uh, hanging from a plant so close to us. We tasted the delicious tomatoes that some kind people shared with us in these, in these plants that they care so much. We talked with another mother that followed us with us, and she had no idea what this place was, uh, like me. And her little kid was playing with my kid as well, with the rakes and the shovels, with the dirt, watering the plants from all, others, sharing the, the experience. Um, the kids were eager to play with this and to see and to create and to transform. I think if only parents knew more about this park, this could be like an amazing experience and knowledge for the kids, um, for our community as well, for, for all of us. I believe that we should keep and expand this experience, this beautiful garden, for, to give the opportunity for more to enjoy it. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Hi.
My name is Rachel Moss. I live in thirty-three thirty northeast one ninetieth street, Aventura. I have been a proud resident of Aventura for the past eight years. During this time, I have lived in Aventura Marina two buildings. This complex is right behind Founder's Park South. I am very excited to hear that the city wants to put pickleball courts in our wonderful city. I feel like this would enhance the city greatly for many reasons, but not in our garden, our peaceful, meditative, quiet space. The city of Aventura has so much construction going on everywhere. The streets are constantly congested from fixing roads and building more high-rises. People often refer to this, to this city as Avantorture because of all the traffic. It is so horrendous. Founder's Park for the past six or so weeks has had to deal with a huge pipe burst. This has caused lots of closures and half of the parking spaces in Founder's Park cannot be used, making it extremely difficult to bring your child to soccer or the playground. On top of this, they moved the travel soccer as well as the girl's soccer to Founder's Park, causing even more traffic on the field and off the field. The grass of Founder's has really taken a beating from all the extra usage and will probably need to be reseeded. This is because they are repairing Waterways Park, causing even more traffic. The worst part about the pipes, pipe burst was the awful smell it gave when you walked by. The, the pickleball and tennis ball courts construction will cause a ton more traffic that will last at least a year or maybe more. After the courts are constructed, there will be even more morning traffic for the residents of Hidden Bay, Aventura Marina one and two, as well as the Camden Building. The loud pong pickleballs, as well as the competitive language and grunting of players while hitting the ball will reverberate and create a ton of noise pollution for the students at Aces and the surrounding neighbors who will not be able to enjoy their quiet time on their balconies, taking in our gorgeous marina. I grew up in Manhattan. It is said to be the greatest city in the whole world. I have been told that Aventura is now considered a metropolitan city. Every single neighborhood in Manhattan has green spaces and community gardens. This is to have a quiet place to enjoy, a quiet place of enjoyment and tranquility in an otherwise chaotic environment. I recently saw a video where the mayor was commenting on the loud voices of children playing. In Manhattan, there are a lot more noises going on than children's laughter, and that does not seem to disturb the community gardeners and the people who come to find tranquility in nature. Besides the countless community gardener, gardens all over the island of Manhattan, there is Central Park, which is thriving with light. There is not one natural garden in all of Aventura besides the community garden that is now being replaced. The city of Aventura loves to talk about how green it is. The project to take our garden is not green at all. You're taking out life and replacing it with concrete. Right now, there are seven different types of species of butterflies.
Your time, your three minutes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Good evening. I'm Beverly Kazam, three three seven zero northeast one hundred and ninetieth street. So our, our family actually have been, oh, living, had, we had the second home here for the last twenty-one or twenty-two years. And I made the permanent change from New York all the way here about two years ago. And believe it or not, all the time that we've been coming back and forth, I was not really that aware of this small little park that we had right outside our door. And recently I started visiting every single day, I, because I heard that a lot of people don't visit it, and I happen to, I'm, happen to be intrigued by pickleball. I'd like to learn, I'd like to be part of that community. So I went over and I, I visited, and I visited on many occasions. I saw, um, elderly couples there sitting on benches, holding hands. I saw older women walking around checking all the gardens. I saw a mom with her four kids teaching them how to garden. I saw a grandmother happily bringing her grandchildren there, teaching them how to garden. I saw another mother walking her children around in, in strollers, or a, a family teaching other children how to ride bicycles. Really is a lovely park, and it's probably one of the only few with a waterfront view. I'm not saying don't do pickleball. I think it's a great community sport. I would love to join and be a part of it. I videotaped a bunch of children over there playing soccer. I videotaped people gardening. I spoke to many, many people. I think it's a mistake, and I'm really hoping that all of you can take a look, go there again. And now that I'm fully aware of this park and I'm fully aware of its existence, and I've been spreading the word around to a lot of people about how beautiful it is, I think more people will start visiting even more so. It's so tranquil and peaceful, and it's a real good escape. We want to keep Aventura green, one of the very few places that we have, so, thank you, and I really hope you'll consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
My name is Jennifer Hoberman. I live at three three seven oh northeast one ninetieth street. I'd like to impart a little history on the board and those in this room who may not know about the land that once sat where, where Founder's Park was once destined to be a superwind Dixie. Don't know if you're all aware of that. My client was the owner of the adjoining property now known as Park Central. And, and it was at that time the Bay Hub, a residential complex, and he asked me to reach out to the community and gather support to defeat what we knew would be a detriment to the community. We knew that the well-being of the residents would be at stake. They would be competing with eighteen-wheel trucks and baby strollers would be, um, you know, in collision course. We also knew the noise that that would bring, and we also knew about the untenable traffic. Obviously, at that time, the community came together and we implored our elected officials, and we let them know that we wanted them to do the right thing, and they did. And that is why we have Founder's Park today, because that initiative was defeated because the community came together. And I want to draw the many parallels that we have today with Founder's Park South, what the city is attempting to do. Again, we stand as a community before you. We haven't been able to be heard before. And we ask our elected board to protect the green oasis of this beautiful park, the trees and the community gardens, the peace and the tranquility that the residents enjoy. We ask that those, many of those who enjoy the park are able to continue to do so as it exists today. We're over four hundred strong. We've been at this two weeks. There's five of us who went out there and said, hey, do you know what's going on with the community garden park? Nobody knew what was going on with the community garden park. We have twenty-five people who took their time to show up today, to speak to you all, to let you know how we all feel. We like pickleball. We like tennis. We like sports courts. We don't think this is the right place for them. We want to offer alternatives. We don't think you should block waterfront views. We don't think you should pull out community gardens. We don't think you should pave over green spaces. You've heard many of the arguments put before you. They're cogent. We ask you that we feel there's other places that, for those courts to be. I just drove past the Founder's Park today. I saw a little pocket behind the tennis court. Could you put a pickleball court or two there? Yeah. Could you take a little portion of the, of the park and put a, a couple courts there? You could. You could do a lot of things. You can put it along two hundred and thirteenth street, maybe next to the dog park, next to the high school. There are places. We can work to help find those places. We can also ask you if this community, um, that may be a developer, a real estate attorney. There's often times where you trade development rights, variances. We know all developers want them.
Thank you.
Ask them for the tennis.
Thank you very much. Hi.
Alexandra Bonet Nunez at two one three nine nine Marina Cove Circle. Um, I'm actually part of the group that put together the original proposal for additional tennis courts. However, that was not the original location of Founder's Park South. So I'm going to speak about this from a little bit of a different perspective of what you've heard before. Um, we currently only have two tennis courts of the same surface, which doesn't allow us to hold, um, tournaments of any kind in our city, even within the actual, uh, clinics that we currently have, both youth and adult. Um, so additional courts would allow us to provide more services for residents of the city, youth and adults alike. Doing it across the street at Founder's Park South does actually come with quite a few complications for us as part of the group that maintains the current courts. Um, it does create a little bit of an issue when people come on the courts during non-playing times. Uh, clay courts require quite a bit of maintenance. They do need to be watered multiple times a day in order to protect the longevity of those courts, um, in turn saving the city money for those. So it is important that we would have people there monitoring the courts during non-tennis hours, which would mean that at Founder's Park South, we would need another booth with more city employees there to monitor, make sure that it was residents using the court during the allotted times. Like I said, having multiple courts of the same surface would allow us to provide more services for the city, including tournaments. Right now, we're running two youth clinics concurrently, Monday, Wednesday, and Tuesday, Thursday. Those have been full basically since COVID restrictions were put into place. We are one of the only sports, um, groups active during the COVID times, which we are very proud to be able to do safely for the city. We have had, in the last five years, I believe it's four hundred youth members during, um, coming through tennis and almost two hundred residents taking private lessons. We actually would like to offer more programs, but don't have the time or facilities to do so right now, um, especially without infringing on other residents who aren't part of the actual scheduled programming that just want to use the courts available. So we would like to see more courts, maybe not at Founder's Park South, especially because that would require us to have youth crossing the street at various times, especially during busy after-school hours, making it more difficult to ensure the safety of them. We do also like to keep the youth together during program times to make sure that we can move kids up and down as needed. We're currently running these programs, um, I believe from six to eighteen, making it difficult to, um, have them divided appropriately. So if we could have more courts, it would allow for more court time and have them more, divided more equally, allowing for better sports for the community. So just some things to consider as you think about placement of these courts.
Thank you. Hi.
Mayor. My name is Richard Kaufman. I live at two oh nine three six Bay Court in the Waterways. I've been a resident of Aventura for over twenty-five years. I was here when the parks first opened. I have a group of friends that are also residents that play there almost daily. It is very difficult to get a court now because naturally, twenty-five years later, there are more people here. So how can you get a court? Because everybody loves the way the court is maintained, and, uh, it's, it's very convenient for everybody because we all live in this five or six-mile radius. I think the idea of keeping the, the courts on the side where the, where the baseball diamond is, is a good idea. It'll be more controllable and, uh, easier to maintain. The guys that I play with love the game. They really do. They enjoy it every day that we play. And I want you to consider that. These are not men that are twenty or thirty years old. These are guys that have worked hard their whole lives and this is their outlet. So just consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
My name is Drew Epstein. I live at thirty-one thirty-one northeast one eighty-eight street, penthouse one dash twelve oh five. I've been a resident here for over forty years. I was raised here. I grew up as an athlete. I know the benefits of health and what it does. Sometimes people like different music. Sometimes people like different sounds. I know it's not that easy just to get a location. You could just say, get this, get that. But I feel like the spot took a lot of it into consideration. I think there's a lot that pickleballs can be beautiful courts. It's not just concrete. It's not just this. You can make the atmosphere beautiful with gardens and trees. Now with the new developments coming in, and the developers that are coming into Aventura, like Brickle, these buildings are gardens in cities. And when you walk in between a lot of these buildings in Aventura, it's surprisingly how beautiful they are, and there's nice peaceful places to be. So I don't think it's that easy just to say, oh, move it here to here. I think you guys did a very good job trying to pick out the location, and I think that it'd be amazing for the children, the future, to get out and exercise and do it from young to old. If you go up to Boca here, Wellington, uh, Naples, the number one pickle play, ball place in the world, Tom Brady, this one, it's coming up and up. It's just beginning. So to have a beginning and be the ground layers for pickleball here, I don't think it would be a bad idea. I think it's a good idea. So I thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi. My name is Margie Oster. I live in Hidden, thirty-three seventy Hidden Bay. The words of Johnny Mitchell should be heeded. Don't pave paradise. I put up a pickle, and put up a pickleball court. Save our gardens and our trees because you don't know what you get till it's gone. Don't pave paradise. I go there every day of my life. Every day I sit there, every day I rest, every day I look at the children. I haven't seen any of you, not even once, when I'm there, ever. So I would like you to sit there or take some walks and see the beauty that we have in Aventura. Everybody repeat it. I don't want to repeat everything, but there are other places in Aventura that we could have this, this much-needed pickleball court. This is not the place. Try to preserve it. Look at other cities in the United States, and everybody has a green city. It would be wonderful for you to say, we have a green city. So please don't do this. Go visit, go sit, and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else before I close public comment? Okay, thank you all for participating. Uh, I'm, I'm just going to make a couple of comments because number one, I wanted for the record to correct a couple of things that I think were misstated, not intentionally. And, uh, the other thing is that, um, I want you to be aware of some of the actual facts. But first, let me say that several years ago, as a commissioner, it was I that reached out to the town of Surfside, where I previously served, and asked them to forward us their procedures, rules, and regulations regarding community gardens, because I was advocating for community gardens. I think it's a wonderful thing. I think it's great. I was very happy to be one of the people responsible for it actually happening in Aventura. But at no time did I mean to give off the impression that this was becoming, uh, an exclusive private park for gardeners. The, the, most of you that spoke tonight live right there. And in my twelve years as an elected official, that's what always happens, okay? People, you have the absolute right to be passionate about your neighborhood. You know the acronym NIMBY, not You know the acronym NIMBY, not in my backyard. Wherever there is a new project, those neighbors are in here. This room has been packed many times, depending on the address of what's happening. Oftentimes, it's stuff we can't do anything about. But up here, those of us up here don't have the luxury to only advocate for our particular neighborhood. We have only three-point-five square miles, and we have overwhelming needs and limited resources, and we have to make decisions based on what's good for the greater good, the greater community. Personally, I would be standing there and sitting there and speaking there, just like you, because I live in Hidden Bay. There is no benefit to me for the, by the way, it's three tennis courts and six pickleball. It's doubling our capacity for tennis because of our youth programming that's desperately needed. In any event, I have the luxury, due to good management in the building where I live. I have the luxury to ride the elevator to the third floor and play pickleball in my building anytime I want, which I do. I have the luxury to ride the elevator to the third floor, play tennis anytime I want. But we have many members of our city that don't have that luxury, and they also can't afford to bring in a private tennis instructor or coach for their children. So they're part of our programming. We're exploding in parks and recreation with our limited resources. Some people mentioned Founder's Park and what happened. That was FPNL who created that issue. The reason is because we're putting lights in. Do you know why we're putting lights in? Because we need more hours in the day to satisfy the programming requirements of our community. You mentioned seeding the grass. There's not going to be any grass. We're putting in artificial turf because our programming, the grass can't handle our programming, can't handle our robust softball league and our soccer and everything else. So we have to find ways. We all love green space. I was part of the commission where we opened a peace park on one-hundred-and-eighty-eighth Street. You know what it included? A waterfront pathway all the way around, open for everyone, around our performing arts center, around Echo. It's beautiful. It's peaceful. It's meditative. It's green. We also found the land for a high school, which we desperately needed. Now we're looking for land for another school. We have, you meant, you heard that the lottery was just held. Well, we have over a thousand moms that we have to say, I'm sorry, but little Jimmy didn't win the lottery. We don't have room in our schools. We need more land. We don't have it. So everything is a compromise. There are no exclusive use parks. By the way, I didn't even mention the dog park that we were able to open. We try. So also, when you mentioned, we didn't reach out. Simply not true. Our director of community development has been speaking to the gardeners for over a year. They were asked, do you, the original plan was to move the gardens to Veterans Park. They said, no, we prefer along the waterfront. One of the women who spoke tonight sent me an email and said, if you move them, don't move them on the waterfront. Please put it next to the asphalt so I don't have to schlep forty pounds of soil. So we'll never please everybody. But for me, I'd much rather see the park exactly as it is, because I live there. It's better for me. But I can't do what's best for me. I have to do what's best for the community. I fully understand your advocacy. It makes perfect sense. But this is the difficult choices we have. It's been a two-year process. Every single time this is discussed, has been in an open public meeting. Every single time for over two years. Whether you were aware of it or not, I can't help that. It's been discussed, there were at least eight months in a row, maybe twelve months in a row, where people came, the gardeners, and spoke. Wasn't you, then it wasn't you. They were here, okay? I saw a couple of people who spoke over a year ago in this room. So we got a grant. We did studies. The drainage is not an issue. Derm is involved. They did the permitting. All of this was taken into consideration because we do care, and that's the reality. And I will tell you, you say you never saw any bus. Do you know that when I had my vision to bring Freebie to Aventura, I rode those circulator buses for four months undercover by myself, because I wanted the truth about ridership, and I exposed what I consider it to be a scam, and I brought Freebie here. Well, I go to that park every day. And the reason for the video was because everyone kept telling me they go there to meditate because it's quiet. So I videotaped the children at recess, which I find delightful. But that is not the park to meditate, at least not five days a week. It is very loud. I've had complaints, not that I can do anything about it. I've had complaints from the people at Camden, because at their pool, they say they can't relax because the kids are too loud at ACES. Could we quiet the kids down at recess, okay? That pool is farther away than Founder's Park South is from ACES. It's very loud. Again, I find it delightful. But I went there to see for myself, and I go every day. Five days a week, I walk past there, and I go in there. You'll notice in the video, there's not one person there, not one person, okay? And that's what I find most of the time. Please, you, keep quiet. We don't do that here. Did I interrupt you when you were yelling at me? Please have respect, okay? I'm telling you from the heart, I go every day. I'm not making up statistics. I go into the park every day. I live there to see the usage, okay? There never came a time when I said, oh, look at all those families. Look at those five guys over there. It didn't happen, okay? I agree with you. It should be used more. It would be great for people to take advantage of it. It's not for meditating most of the time, but for gardening, for walking. It's terrific. And at no time did any member of this commission ever consider taking away the gardens. But everything is a compromise for the greater good. We can't look out for the few. We have to look out for the many, and it's difficult. We're constantly, constantly struggling for more land because we're only three-point-five square miles of densely built urban municipality. So any thought that we don't care, okay? Our tennis program is exploding, and the, it's something that's so important. It's not just tennis. It's soccer. It's everything. And if we put on social media, if you support tennis or pickleball, come to the commission meeting, every seat will be taken. But it's not a contest of you versus them. It's about we, okay? That's the reality, and I'm sorry that we'll never make everybody happy. But please don't think we don't care, and don't think I don't feel exactly like you do, but I don't have the luxury to advocate for status quo. We have to, we have to expand our programming. Mr. Friedland?
I just want to make one comment. I don't want to really go into everything here because this is not something that we're actually voting on, and I do appreciate everyone's comments and everyone who came to speak. Mayor Weinberg talked about the size of our city. And when you walk outside and you see green lands, you see green space, you don't know that we don't own that. It doesn't belong to the city. It belongs to a developer or a person. We can't control and stop someone from building on land that they already own if it is zoned for that. So if you see green space, I'm sorry, in ten years, it may not be green space. It's not, if it's not being changed from what it is permitted to, it is somebody's land. They own it. So when you see green space, I walk around Country Club Drive, and I look in front of a neighborhood, and I see a big grassy land. We don't own it. I'm just telling you the truth. The city of Aventura doesn't own that land. So for two and a half years, I have been sitting here, and many of the speakers that spoke today have actually come about two years ago, not even just one year ago, and knew about this issue, and there were many locations looked at and tried and alternatives proposed. And I don't know what the problems were with all of the other possibilities, but what they tried to do was accommodate the most people when we do not own the land. And that's just a reality. So you're always going to feel that Aventura is going to be knocking down paradise for a parking lot. I moved here thirty years ago, and we didn't have one-third of the number of buildings. I wish I'd been on a zoning and a planning community, but I wasn't, and this land already belongs to developers, to owners, to individuals. No more different than we could come and take your house and tell you that we're going to take it to make a new park. We just can't. And you have to always keep that in the back of your head.
Any, we're at twelve. Any other business? Anyone else have any? If not, I'll ask, public comment is closed. If not, I'll ask for motion to adjourn. Commissioner Bloom in a second. Commissioner Cruz. All those in favor, say aye, or adjourn. Play for a picture?
It was not important for you, anything. I gotta go. You know where I'm seeing you. I pretend. I'll see you in five seconds. I need to go back.
We got peace, park, and walk?
If that's what they're willing to do, but you're forgetting something that people want.